Is this on? I want to call it a meeting to order. Uh, Pitt County Board of Education will meet in regular session June 2nd, 2014 at 6:30. Third floor board room. And they've, uh, we've got following items on our list. And first, we'll call the meeting to order and then roll call. We have, let's see, Billy is absent, uh, and Christine is absent. Everyone else present. Uh, the pledge of allegiance was Christine. Jennifer, did you mind you and me?
I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for a moment of silence, we need to remember one of our board members, Billy Peaton. I talked with him this afternoon. He's in the hospital. He's having chest pains and related to his heart or whatever. And, uh, he's still in the hospital and he probably will be kept overnight. But we need to remember Billy. We also, also need to remember our students and testing during this time as well as the parents of those students. Uh, and the, uh, stress and whatever that goes along with testing. Uh, also, we need to remember our graduates and their safety. Uh, you know, when you graduate, we did it, but we celebrated, but we want them to celebrate in a safety, a safe manner. And that all of our, uh, students will be kept from harm's way. Let's have a moment of silence. Amen. To the Supreme Court. Um, uh, first, uh, item, any adjustments to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
I believe we approved it, Jennifer.
Second.
Mr. Farce made the motion, mark second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public expression brought. Do not have any. Okay, spotlight on teaching and learning, Brock. First, we have Wintergreen and DH Conley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hope everybody's doing well. Uh, we're going to first introduce, uh, me, a couple of media coordinators from the district. We have Jenna Bullard and Vanessa Sasser. Jenna's with DH Conley High School. Vanessa's with Wintergreen Primary. And they're going to come up and talk to you for a couple of minutes about a collaboration project, uh, between the two schools. So, ladies and gentlemen, come on.
Good evening. We'd like to thank you for this opportunity to share with you some of the amazing things that are going on in the media centers and in the classrooms at Wintergreen Primary and at DH Conley. I'm Vanessa Sasser with Wintergreen Primary. And our project was tradigital storytelling. Um, we're going to tell you about our project from the Wintergreen Primary standpoint and what was going on with our students, with our instructional coach and the collaborative effort of our second grade teachers. And then I'm going to let Ms. Bullard share with you what was going on at the same time at DH Conley and then how those two things, um, partnered together. Part of the second grade curriculum during the fourth marking period, um, in science is animal life cycles. And we were looking for creative ways, um, to teach that information for students, uh, for them to begin some inquiry and research. We began with, um, the super three research model. We coordinated and collaborated with the second grade teachers and with our instructional coach to do that. We realized that we, um, we can gather information, students can read, students can, um, record the information. And we wanted to take it a step further rather than just having them write a paragraph or two. We wanted to create, um, a creative expression for them to show what they have learned. Um, and we began working with, um, nonfiction text. We wanted to have them show from the beginning of the year until the end of the year, those things that they had been, um, working on and how that would apply to, um, introducing technology into, um, the curriculum.
Um, on the DH Conley side, we had a lot going on at one time and it just was kind of a perfect storm to partner with, um, with Wintergreen. What we were looking at was something creative that we could do with, um, it just so happened that it worked with a junior English class and they were working with the Common Core standard of writing with the audience in mind. And so they were doing a novel study of Of Mice and Men, and if it's been a while since you've read it. Um, one of the major themes of that book is with the character Lenny, who is mentally disabled and it deals with bullying. So it was a great opportunity for our students to write a short story, um, based loosely on Of Mice and Men that they could carry over and share with second graders at Wintergreen that dealt with that topic of bullying. Um, so, i- in addition to that, we did it with a junior English class, um, with Christie Sutton, who's an excellent teacher, one of our Impact Ventures grant teachers, who also had two ECU interns. So it was a great opportunity to pull them in and see how, what can happen when we collaborate with instructional coach and media and the classroom teachers. Um, we did want to take a second and show you some of the products that they made. Is this, can we pull this up? So, we ended up using an online tool called Storyjumper. The great thing about it is, um, we're always looking for things that are free. So it's completely free, um, and we could share out the links with the classroom teachers and with parents so that the students could then take these stories and show them to their parents. This was one of the stories that one of the juniors made. Um, we ended up traveling two days. One day, DH Conley went over to Wintergreen and we shared our stories with the students. The great thing about this program, like this is the title page, and it has a dedication page. And so our high school juniors thought about things that we as classroom teachers and media coordinators did not even think about. They wanted to know, who is my student? What second grade buddy do I have? What is their name? Are they a boy or a girl? So they wanted to dedicate their book to their second grade buddy. They wanted to make sure they chose characters and themes that were appropriate for a boy or a girl. Um, this is one that was done by a student named Blair and she just so happened to get partnered with my son, who's a second grader at Wintergreen. So he thought it was great that, um, that Blair wrote a book for him.
Not only did the teachers, instructional coaches, the ECU interns, um, collaborate together, but we wanted to give our junior English students and our second graders an opportunity to rise, um, to the next level. So they took what they had learned and then they worked together collaboratively. An 11th grade, um, English student and a second grader to create, um, the digital copy of the animal research project that the second grade student did. On our first, um, field trip to Wintergreen, the DH Conley students were able to share their, um, Storyjumper related to the theme of mice and men and get to know the Wintergreen student, um, to build some relationships. And on the next visit, when Wintergreen Primary visited DH Conley, the second graders had all of their information, uh, related to their research and then had created a paper copy of what their, their book would look like. So together, the juniors and the second graders were able to create a digital story to include all of the information that they had, um, gathered and learned through those research models and to include those things that were important, um, and part of the curriculum, the text features. Did they have captions, photographs, an index, um, a title page?
So we have a table of contents. They bolded words and then created a glossary in the back of all of those vocabulary words. They learned all those nonfiction text features that they need to know about. And another great tool I just wanted to mention has been, um, Google Drive and the ability that it gives us to collaborate when we're at different campuses because we could very easily create a document, share it with each other, work on it during the day without having to have that face-to-face contact. Ms. Sasser, who never likes to toot her own horn, however she is, the Pitt County Schools Media Coordinator of the Year. And she is that for a reason. She did wonderful things, like she created a checklist of everything that that second grader needed to have in their book. We shared it with our high school juniors. So when they came over that day, they knew, okay, we've got to have this, we've got to have this, we've got to have this. So, um, we were just so pleased with how all the students and the staff rose to the occasion and made it such a positive experience. And if you could have seen those second grader faces the day they walked in DH Conley, it was like, I am at the best place on earth, you know? And we made sure our students wore their Conley gear and their letter jackets. And so they might as well have been with professional athletes or whatever it is that they look up to that day. So it was, it was really neat.
One thing that came out of this, not only did it work well for us, but everything that we have created, we are able to share out with other media coordinators, other teachers, other instructional coaches throughout the county, throughout North Carolina. And we plan to, um, submit a proposal to present this at the NC SLAMA conference in October.
This is just a few of the pictures from the day that, um, our large students got to sit in the little chairs at Wintergreen, which was fun. And then pictures of when, you know, they got to sit in the big chairs at DH Conley. And all of this has been shared with Mr. Lexworth, so, um, it's accessible to anybody that would like it. Thank you for letting us come.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate it so much.
Great.
Pitt County Board of Education proudly recognizes Jenna Bullard for creating excellence in the East. The Pitt County Board of Education proudly recognizes Vanessa Sasser for creating excellence in the East. And also to identify that there are free programs out there that can be used in these tough times.
Lots of them, lots of them, Mr. Cowan.
Thank you so much.
Great.
Good job, y'all.
All right, we've got a large group coming in for the next one. Um, and you've seen this group before, uh, since you last saw them. They've taken a trip to the Southeast Robotics Championship. And I probably got the terminology wrong on that, but that's why I'm going to bring up Ms. Ann McClung and the Pitt Pirates Robotics Team to talk to you a little bit about these fancy gadgets down here.
Hi, my name is Ann.
I'm Bill McClung.
Oh, gosh.
We're, we're a team.
Kids, we had a really fantastic season. Um, of course, the Pitt Pirates couldn't do any of this without all the support from school board and all the members in our community. That's one of the things we love about our team and how we're set up is, you know, we're really using the whole community to make this happen. And so we always like to come in, let you know about some of the neat things that have happened this year and the kids are here to talk to you about that now.
And we're going to kick it off with Anishka. Come on up. It's Anisha, but we pick and call her Anisha. So come on up.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Um, I'm Anisha. This is Serena and the rest of the team. Well, some of the, um, so to start off, uh, we, for this year, we started a new program called Robot Sumo. And it basically allows students of all age groups to be introduced to STEM education by allowing them to build mini robots from cardboard. And then they compete with one, another, um, in a match to attempt to push the other robot outside of the box. And you're only given 60 seconds to push them out. And it's really fun and that's what's down there.
Are you in competition now or just showing us?
Um, this is just showing you guys. They're trying to push each other away.
With the AIG groups this year. We did this two times. We had 130 kids over at EPS. Uh, Tim Decree helped to coordinate this with all the AIG teachers in the county. And, uh, really cost effective. I can put $10 a kid, they can come in, build these robots and compete in four hours. So, and, uh, you can expand it, contract it, do whatever you need to, to meet the needs of the students in the program. So it's really cost effective and easy way to do robotics with a lot of people.
Um, next we have Serena.
Uh, this season, the Pitt Pirates have accomplished a lot and we've been awarded for it too. We won the Underwriter Laboratory Industrial Safety Award at both the Raleigh and Washington DC Regional. The industrial... Thank you. Um, the Industrial Safety Award is given to the team that displays excellent safety culture in the pits at competition and in our workshop back home. Our safety captain, Logan Bagley, also won Safety Star of the Day. She won Safety Star of the Day at both regionals and at the international competition. Um, we also won the gracious professionalism award at the international competition. What enabled us to go to St. Louis was that we won the Chairman's Award at the Raleigh Regional. Now, the Chairman's Award is the most prestigious award you can win in the entire competition. It's even better than winning the game itself. Um, the Chairman's Award is given to the team that acts as the best role model for other teams. Um, they really display the qualities and the goals and the purpose of first. And so we were really honored to win that and to be able to compete for it at the international championship. Next, we have Lucas to talk about our robot.
So for this year's competition, uh, the name was aerial assist. And well, that game, what we had to do in that game was, we had to take the big ball you see there and we had to pass it with two other robots that were on our alliance. And the real challenge, challenge was passing it with two other robots that were not built like ours. So that was a pretty big challenge trying to, um, I cooperate with other robots that were nowhere designed like ours. And these wheels up front, they actually fold down. These robots fold down and when the ball is on the ground, the wheels spin. And they, they, they pick up the ball into the shooter. Yeah. And you can't really, I don't know if you can see it, but the big, big piece of wood in the middle is actually what shoots the ball. It's like a catapult. It's got springs and... That's how you figure out the ball. We wouldn't shoot it, but we're... Yeah, it would shoot in, we could, we could either shoot it in a...
Jill would be the target.
I can't catch it.
I'm not sure, sure if I like the way it's pointed right now.
Somebody, somebody get it out, please.
They can shoot the ball about 20 feet.
Let, let this shoot.
No, no. This is the catapult that actually would. You see the, the blue strap?
Oh, yeah.
We had to shoot in either three goals or two goals, uh, at the top, uh, split in half. And then there was a one-point goal just down the bottom. We could either like push the ball in.
The only thing I hear do, I would tell you to turn, aye?
This robot can, can shoot at about, I think we, at about 18 feet.
Yes, safety was actually kind of an issue this year because so many people had very powerful catapults. So it's actually a, there's actually a set of eyeballs on there that we put a safety strap on that was mandated for when we were transporting and moving the robot. Because there actually were some injuries, so not on our team, but, uh, it's a bit bad.
Safety guard and all of that stuff. Cool.
If you're learning how to go to the refrigerator? These students can do it.
Make some money on that one.
Honestly, we just appreciate all what you guys have done for us. Uh, without your support, uh, y'all really made it very instrumental for us to pay the registration fee to get to St. Louis, which was a huge amount. And again, we are so thankful and, and, um, very honored that y'all thought so much of us. This year, all six high schools are part of the team and we're real excited about that. It's always been a challenge to get all of them there. We're, we're there and we are steady on with all six because that one is, uh, from the North Pitt area is locked down for three more years and there are younger brothers coming up. So we know, and we'd love to get more from all attendance areas.
We really certainly appreciate all, all your effort. And I just want to say something about the students that represented Pitt County. Um, you, you guys enabled us to take, uh, 50 students to Raleigh representing Greenville and Pitt County, uh, to Washington DC representing Pitt County and Greenville and to St. Louis representing our town. We showed up with the East Carolina bus, it was way cool. Uh, but there were people taking pictures of the bus from Greenville, North Carolina. It was cuck showing up there. Um, and the, the students that you allowed to go and represent us were, were spectacular and represented our community so well. I really want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
You know, I've been on this for like six years now and every year, y'all have been able to come and show us your, the product of what you've done. And obviously you represent us very well at Pitt County at a very high level. And it sounds like y'all are the ones to beat these days, so congratulations.
I think the important thing to note is that the interest in this program at Pitt County is pretty big. We had 80 kids come out last year and we took 49 of them, okay? Because we just space and time and people and honestly, it's time for a second team in Pitt County. I'd like to, I'd like to be able to bring two robots in here and let them fight it out for you. So obviously there's a tremendous amount of interest and we hope we can do that.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
As a token of appreciation, we'd like to give you guys a photo of our team and a certificate of appreciation.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Much, congratulations.
Thank you.
I leave one for Billy and, uh...
Christine.
Christine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, that's awesome.
Great job, y'all. Thank you.
How cool is that?
Fair. All right, fun stuff. All right. I'm going to change pace a little bit here. Um, I, before I do though, I just, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I want to point out a couple of things that students have done recently that they're testing this week and we didn't feel comfortable bringing them in with testing going on. Um, we had Wintergreen Intermediate School recently won the North Carolina Region One Elementary Battle of the Books Competition. Uh, they beat six other school districts to do that. Uh, Aiden Griffin High School won the Pitt County School System's Annual High School Book Wars. Recently at, uh, South Central High School. We've got 11 students who are going to governor's school in the summer. Um, five of the six high schools represented in that. Farmville Middle Math and Science teacher Kayla Norville recently was, uh, named a Kenan Fellow. Also, we had our math masters competition recently. Aiden Elementary won the Group One Contest and Ridgewood Elementary won the Group Two Contest. Uh, one last thing, the automotive training program at Farmville Central High School was recently, uh, recently received national accreditation, uh, from the National Institute for Automotive Service Excellence, um, which is good for them out there as well. Um, now, changing gears a little bit, we're going to talk, uh, a little bit about a couple of businesses here in the community that have been very supportive of Pitt County schools. First of all, I want to talk about Russell Williams.
Oh, my goodness.
If you want to come up with Russell for just a second.
Oh, yes.
Russell's an assistant manager at Fresh Market. And, you know, when I first got this job, one of the things we talked about doing was bringing back the Employee of the Month Program. It had gone kind of stale and, um, and we felt like it was really important to recognize our employees for the positive things they're doing, uh, not necessarily in the classroom, but, uh, anywhere in the school system. And it was funny because not long after we talked about it, Russell called me and said, hey, what's going on with that employee of the month thing? You know, it's been a while. They've always were a sponsor and, uh, he was very eager to start it back up. And that's exactly what we did. And Russell and Fresh Market have been providing $50 gift certificates and discount coupons and so forth for our employee of the month each month. And hopefully that will continue, we'll see, but, uh... And I thought it would be good if, if we could recognize him tonight for everything they've done. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Pitt County Board of Education proudly recognizes Russell Williams, Fresh Market for creating excellence in the East. Appreciate all you do, even though I can still outlift you at the gym.
What gym is that at? Next time we take a field trip, because I got to see this. Next, uh, we've got David and Kelly Hollinger from Texas Roadhouse. Um, any of you who have been involved with our schools, I mean, you know that Texas Roadhouse has been a great partner with our school system. They have, aside from just helping cater numerous events at schools and for teachers or, or students, they've also, um, been very supportive of the Employee of the Month Program by providing, uh, discounts or free entrees for the employees who win. Uh, at the same time, they've given gift certificates for, I think, maybe Teacher of the Year, Principal of the Year, all kinds of different award ceremonies we have. And then they also provided, uh, I was 300 or more than 300 free entrees for all the schools across the district to give to their staff as rewards for their staff for jobs well done inside the school building. And I, so again, very supportive. And I know that, um, David, um, I think he just wants to say a couple of words. He, he told me from the very beginning, they pride themselves on, uh, being a great partner with the school system. And I think we, we should be happy to have him in our community.
Yeah, it's, um, you know, we're a big restaurant chain that operates like a little restaurant. And so we feel very fortunate to have you all as partners because we can't do what we do without partners to support us. So it's a, a great partnership and I'm proud. I see a lot of familiar faces. Most people recognize me with a hat on my head, but, uh, Kelly told me not to wear a hat today. We're just, you know, he told me about this a few weeks ago and, uh, it kind of makes it all worthwhile. You know, we do the kids, a lot of the stuff with the kids. And, you know, some kids that come eat with us have never had an opportunity to go out and eat without those coupons they get from Texas Roadhouse. So the best thing, the best reward for me is to see that small kid and they're line dancing with our weight staff. Those are the people that have been in the restaurant. And you know what? That might be the best thing that happens to them all year. And so for that, I'm very proud of what we do and, and we'll continue to do everything we can to help everybody.
Good deal.
I'm in that weightlifting competition.
Who's going to be in the line dance? By the way, uh... Our restaurant represented Pitt County. We won out of 450 restaurants. Our restaurant won the line dancing competition for Texas Roadhouse. Thank you, it's my pleasure. Thank you. She's the brains of the operation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brock, did you mention that they did have a plate for the board members?
I'm sorry.
Ah, man, I got to put an X by your name.
I should have said it while the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Um, yes, they brought dinner for everyone tonight as well. I've got ribs and corn. I've got all kinds of good stuff in my office. I've got ribs and corn, I've got all kinds of good stuff in my office.
Maybe it won't be so long. Okay, moving on down, consent items, motion to approve, consent item?
Second.
Mildred? And then Mildred's second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Okay, that's approved. New business, PCC Board of Trustees and Dr. Dennis Massey.
Forbes. Good evening. It is a pleasure to introduce you to three of the Board of Trustees members that you have appointed. The fourth was unable to come tonight because of his position at ECU, but let me bring them down here if that's okay.
Fine.
We've been wanting to have a meeting with you and exchange and I want you to know how much we enjoy working with your new superintendent. I still call him new.
I'll take new as long as I can get.
Dr. Lenker has been a pleasure to partner with and we have lots of good things on the runway and some already in place. If I could ask a few of these people to come on down here. Mr. Charles Long, who is no stranger to this group, I think, former principal, longtime principal at Farmville Central. Patty Sanders Smith, who was a appointee this year by you and has hit the ground running, has been a great board member at Pitt Community College. And Mr. Don Mills, everyone in Greenville knows Don Mills. Don Mills has been on our board for how long, Don? Six years?
Yeah, second term.
Yeah, second term. So they are with us tonight and they're here to answer any questions that you have. You received some information that I shared with them and I think Superintendent Lenker shared with you. We have a strong but growing relationship with Pitt County schools. I think we can complement each other quite well and we look forward to making it stronger in the future. In fact, we have started a new welding program at Aiden Griffin High School that will begin this fall. And a new electrical program at Farmville Central, which also will begin this fall. So we see bright things in our future. Were they reviewed to respond or answer any questions or?
Well, what I would like, if they could just give a little summary of what has been taking place in regards to the partnership between Pitt County Schools and Pitt Community College. I knew you were step four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, let me say it's good to be home.
Yes.
As you know, I was here 22 years in this system and spent two years in this office prior to leaving. Immediately upon my leaving, I hooked up with a group from Raleigh to do educational leadership services across the state. And our first assignment was to work on early college high schools and change schools. So I'm tickled to see that you were interested in that concept and hope that we can continue that discussion and it may finalize in something. What are we now doing? The visions program, I think, is one of the most exciting that we have. We're working in the high school and then transitioning those students to the community college. And over, I guess, maybe close to 200 students will be involved in between this year and next year as we go through that. These are students who are many times first-year college students and need that motivation that the grant we have received from the Smith Foundation to get them started. I won't take a lot of time, but I'm tickled to see that we're going back to some programs that will rejuvenate in the high schools. Mr. Chair, you know that we had a very, very strong electrical program at the Farmville High School and it went away. And between this collaboration, I hope it can be renewed and we'll see it again. I've, I'm gonna close with this. I just told you, I've been connected with the Pitt County Schools and with the community college for 22 years prior to my retirement. I did not know, however, of the quality that exists there until I became on that Board of Trustees. And I've worked now, I guess, probably six or seven years and serving as the vice chair of the board. It is a fine quality institution. The more we can work together to get your students, will benefit us all. Thank you.
I guess I'm the newest member of the board and recently retired from a school system not far from here. And what I'm most excited about is the fact that there's a possibility of early college here in Pitt County. And it's just ironic tonight that my former boss is here, Larry Price, who worked hard to get an early college in Wilson is quite successful. And I know early colleges can work and I really think that that will be a prime opportunity for many of our students here in Pitt County. And I have really enjoyed my short time. I'm learning a lot, you know, it's a different perspective, coming from a public school perspective and now going to a community college perspective. But they have really, they're training me well and I really enjoyed being a member of the board and working with Dr. Massey.
And I'm Don Mills, again, my second term on the board. My background is in industry. I was with NACCO Material Handling Group, a local forklift manufacturer, Yale &amp; Heister for 33 years. I had to tie this into PCC, the welding program that PCC has available to high school students. And if you're an industrial company like NACCO is, that really makes a big difference in us finding employees. Having certified welders are not easy to find in this area in particular. So that's been a godsend for NACCO Material Handling Group. I do serve on several boards in the community. I'll say this is one of the more efficient boards and commissions that I work with. Dr. Massey and his team know how to take a dollar and use it to the fullest. Two last comments. When I was at NACCO Material Handling Group for the last 12 years, I was plant manager before I retired. And every year that I can remember, Francis Young would bring the Teachers Executive Institute in and spend a day with us and our HR, our training department would work with them. And it was really a holiday for the teachers. And I'd always open up and welcome the teachers into the plant. And I tell them, you know, it's not the LeBron James and the Michael Jordans that are the heroes of this world, it's the teachers that are the heroes and what's make this world and what makes this country what it is. And just very thankful for what you do to supply those teachers for us. And then second, as a proud grandparent of a fourth grader at Eastern Elementary School, I cannot say enough about Principal Kirkland and what that school does for kids. So thank you for what you do, thank you for the opportunity of serving on the Pitt County, Pitt Community College Board of Trustees.
There's one thing that I would like to say. I do hope that Pitt County and Pitt Community College will do all that they can to get that early college off the ground. I mean, it would be wonderful for our students to be getting a high school degree and a two-year degree at the same time. And one year previously, we tried to get one off the ground and it never succeeded. Now, I just hope that we have the people in place to where it will succeed because that would benefit our county and our students especially tremendously.
I also want to echo what Mr. Forbes has said. I work in a district with a tremendously successful early college and I can tell you, it's about creating opportunities for kids. And that's something that we need to do a better job of with, as a public school system. People are gonna start to have choices in public schools and we need to make sure we're at the forefront and the best choice that people can have and that we're offering the best quality of instruction. Public schools are second to none in terms of what we offer, in terms of programming, and I hope people realize the benefit of that. Secondly, I am so pleased, I'm a little bit disappointed that we're kind of on the last cutting edge, a wave of early colleges that are starting in the state. Pitt should be leading in the forefront. But I think it's a tremendous plus to Dr. Lenker's leadership in terms of him bringing this to the forefront, in terms of bringing this tremendous opportunity to our kids and to this community. And also to Dr. Massey and his willingness to partnership. From what I know of the relationship between the superintendent and the president, I think is probably one of the best it's been in a long time. And I think that's very positive for our students and for our community and I'm thankful for that.
Any, Mary?
Yes, I'd like to get to what Mark said, but I also like to say that I'm very glad to see all of you here tonight. It's a first. And that was one of the things, I think, when we met Dr. Sanders Smith and...
Don Mills.
Don Mills. When we discussed during the interview process that we would have a line of communication, a constant line of communication, and we've done that. And now, our parents who do and our faculty and staff that do heavily and have their children's interest and educational interest at heart through PCC and through our public school system, see your faces and know who you are now online, that they can reach out to you and have a better line of communication for their child's education. And I'm pleased with that, very pleased with that indeed. So thank you for coming tonight and thank you again for coming tonight.
Who's our fourth appointee?
Dr. Peter Kragel at East Carolina University.
Right, right.
He had to be away for a professional...
They belong to us.
I don't imagine, I don't imagine it comes up very often for the three of you, but just out of curiosity, if there's an issue on the table at the community college where there is a Pitt County Schools connection, do you feel like you can access Dr. Lenker's office or someone in the central office if need be, just to sort of get a take on how it looks from the school's point of view?
I'd say I have you and I've got your email address.
Yeah, I knew about that.
Jennifer's email address and we corresponded over time.
If you can't correspond, you got my email address too.
I want you to know that I have seen Mr. Forbes at a number of physical fitness places in the area. I usually stood my distance, not the problem. But I do want to say that we have had a good working relationship with all the schools. Principal Johnston at Farmville Central has been a real pleasure to work with. He served on our Farmville Advisory Committee and we will gladly partner with you in every way we can because it's for the benefit of the students and the community.
I'd like to ask a question. In regard to the space that you noted in your comments, that seems to be the problem, the major problem with the early college?
Yes, ma'am. It has been the biggest challenge. As you know, Pitt Community College, and the commissioners are tired of me saying this, is the most crowded of all 50 community colleges in the state. We're getting away from that distinction, but right now, we have some ideas and Superintendent Lenker and I will continue to work on them and we feel like we can accomplish that goal.
So what kind of space are you anticipating? I don't understand, what would you need other than, I don't understand the concept of an early college space, what does that require?
Well, one of the things we would need would be an administrator space, a counselor space, you know, assistant space, plus, you know, you got first year, maybe 75 new kids showing up. They would need classrooms and of course, if you have 75 kids, you got four or five teachers there, so they need classrooms to teach in. So in addition to just having a place for the principal of the school, you would have four new classroom teachers or five new classroom teachers on their campus. So classroom space is the biggest issue we're talking about. And we're working on, Dr. Massey and I are working on how to get through all that.
Back in 2004, maybe '05, when we had the first discussions about this, we approached East Carolina and Pitt Community College. And the stumbling block has always been space and will continue to be a challenge.
Yeah, I know. Do we even have a date? We're nowhere near looking at a potential date.
The date that Dr. Massey and I are shooting for is not this fall, but the fall of 2015. That's the date I would like to start and I know Dr. Massey feels that way, but it's a matter of, we'll work out the date and the timing.
We just got a target.
And with 75 kids and maybe a minimum of four or five teachers and a principal, maybe we can pull something off.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it and thank you a lot and we hope to continue.
Thank you very much for having us here. We enjoyed the dialogue.
Thanks.
Oh, and before I step down, I want to introduce our Vice President for Academic Affairs, Thomas Gould. Dr. Gould is with us and he will be a prime mover in all program development that we get involved in.
Gio.
I just have to say, based on my experience with you and the folks at the community college and what I know of Dr. Lenker since he's been with us, I have no doubt that your creative minds and your determination will get this done. So I think we'll have an early college in 2015.
Thank you, appreciate it. Sean? I was not joking.
I'm hearing about you at all these gyms and I'm just trying not to upset you, I'm very intimidated over you.
Just hold on.
I know you're that chiseled a Don is holding that hand around.
Human Resources Committee update. Ms. Owens and Alala.
It was actually, it was not me, it was Mildred.
Ms. Counselor.
Okay, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Jackson. I sat in for Ms. Williams, she was not able to be there, so I chaired that meeting. But Dr. Jackson will lead us in that discussion.
Good evening, everyone. We had a very quick but detailed meeting on May 27th. And the main topic of discussion for us to begin with was a 25% update. And of course, you heard a lot in the news about the different plans coming through the legislature and the budget. And the 25% process was proposed to be implemented and voted on this month, of course, as of May 16th. And Judge Hobgood's decision kind of put a halt on that. So at this point in time, we're at a stay in the hopes that a decision will come before the end of the month because they have to be distributed and accepted if it is to go on. But right now, there's a ruling to say that it's unconstitutional, so we are holding at this point. And you may have seen since we have met on the 27th, there have been several budgets that have been presented. We have the governor's budget and we also have the senate budget. And they talk about career pathways, professional pay scale, 11% raise for teachers. So there are a lot of different things going on. Also, the 25% process is not completely out of the water because one of the proposals does propose a two-step process where 25% of the teachers would still be determined and then a process to be done before June 15th as a second process that 35% of the teachers would be selected to receive funding as well. So as of right now, the 25% process for us is completed but on hold and we have been in guidance with our legal department, with Mr. Sue and Ms. Stagner, to get advice from everyone and majority of the districts are holding off because we're hoping that a decision will come down soon. So that is where we are with the 25% process. Mr. Cowan gave an update regarding a TA study and he may discuss that during his time up here. But that was the main focus of what we talked about in our meeting on the 27th, was giving a hold to the 25% process. So I'm not sure if Dr. Lenker wanted to share anything additional with that.
No. Hopefully, the General Assembly will step up and, or else the judge will do something. But Deborah Stagner and I have had conversations, I know you've talked to Ken Sue about it and it seems like most people are just trying to wait and see a little bit, so.
If it's not enacted, what's the plan? If the 25% is not...
At our next meeting, which we have us, we will have a special meeting June 16th.
Correct.
We may have to bring it back up then.
Okay.
And we are ready to disperse if need so.
I believe she's already done, got the list ready to go.
All right.
Yes, the list is ready.
Thanks, Sean.
I just want to thank Dr. Jackson for all your efforts. I know particularly with Human Resources, with all this going on in the state legislature, the plan has changed so many times. And I know when I come here sometimes on the weekend, I see your car here and what have you, and I just appreciate the efforts of you and your department and everything you're trying to do to prepare for this unknown future. So thank you very much for your efforts.
Gio.
And the difficulty of doing this 25% list, I just can't even imagine.
I will not share. I've already told Dr. Lenker I probably need a week of vacation because I'm gonna have to have rehab after all of these hours that I really have spent trying to provide him with the list. It is in safe lock and key. So whatever happens from that point happens, I am at a point of relief right now. Any other questions?
And I gotta say a third echo because I've seen the stack that you're working with and I've seen you go through and through, so that's one, two, three. And thank you and the rest of the group for working that out. You've got the package ready to go whenever. That's good. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Beth Ann? Beth Ann.
You skipped, didn't you?
Did I skip over?
Yes, you did.
I'm sorry.
You're gonna have to do it better.
Mark Witcher, EPS Committee.
Taking over here now.
EPS.
Ms. Olstead.
I was skipping over.
Yes, thank you. Good evening.
Hello, Cheryl.
I'm just here to update from the May 19th Educational Programs and Services Board Committee meeting. Uh, present was Mildred Counselor, Robert Moore, Christine Waters, Mark Witcher, Mary Williams. We had two, uh, items of discussion at that meeting. One was the strategic planning that we are in the process of, um, planning, and that is in response to Advance Ed, the report from two years ago, that they recommended that we do a new strategic plan and that we bring in stakeholders. It's also due to the vision and the sort of redirection that Dr. Linker has taken the, the system through and offering opportunities. So, we discussed the three dates that we are looking at in September, in October, September 29th and 30th, and October the 2nd, to actually bring in all the stakeholders. We're working on an invitation list of over 80 people that we want to invite. Um, we talked briefly about, uh, some suggestions from the Board Committee. Uh, that will be going out sometime in the summer. A survey will be done. Misty Marston, who's the Director for the Boys and Girls Club, is gonna help us direct that, so as, um, that comes together, we'll be sending out more information to the stakeholders. The Principals will be actually coming together in, on June the 17th to look at, uh, some district goals. The State just, the State Board just rolled out the new state goals in April, and so we'll be looking, and the senior staff has already looked at the state goals and worked with some district goals to align with that. The Principals will be looking at some school goals to align with that, and then in September, we'll bring all that to the different stakeholders and look for some critical success factors that the stakeholders would like us to look at. The second agenda item discussion was about the newspaper article that was discussed in the Daily Reflector, where we talked about the increase in our autistic children, the spectrum, the kids on that spectrum in our district. Uh, we discussed some of the reasons for why that may be happening. Uh, we talked about some, uh, parents are moving here because of the many resources we have for the autistic, uh, from the Autis, Autism Society, the Teach Center, those kind of things. Uh, she laid out, Robin Wright, the Exceptional Children's Director, laid out a plan for addressing some of these issues for next year. She talked about, um, she did a PowerPoint showing that we have 375 autistic students, 85 are ages 3 to 5, and we have 290 between the age of 6 to 21, and those are where their primary identification is autism. Uh, she talked about how we are going to, uh, we, uh, have five high-functioning autistic classrooms right now, three elementary, one middle, and one high, and that we're gonna be increasing that by, uh, one for the, uh, let's see if I can find it on here, one for the elementary, one for the middle, and one for the high, for the 14, 15 school year. She talked, she discussed how she is focusing on some of the current issues are the growing number of students for this, and that's with no change in identification, teacher recruitment and retention, retention for, for teachers that, um, deal with autistic children, and then the composition of the classes of those, where they have a wide range just within that one class when it gets identified. So, that was discussed, and sort of a plan was laid out for the Board members on what's gonna take place for next year. Uh, also, you received tonight, uh, at your seats, the climate survey that we do every year. Each school does a climate survey for four stakeholders, that's the certified, classified, uh, parent and student groups. What you're looking at within that book are actual numbers, not percentages. We left percentages about two to three years ago, because they had actual numbers. You could have a 50%, but maybe only two people answered it, and that would be 50% out of four. So, you're looking at raw numbers there, and you're looking at the different questions within that climate survey. So, that was left for you to just sort of go through tonight, and if you haven't, does anybody have any questions? If not, I'm gonna turn it over to Beth Ann.
Have we got to do it tonight?
Have you got to what?
Do it tonight.
Oh, no, not tonight. Did I say tonight? You can do it tomorrow. All right. I'll turn it over to Beth Ann if there's no question.
Now, you get to come up, Beth Ann.
Oh, thanks. Um, good evening. Uh, you all received a packet, a yellow packet of our, um, local plan that we request for approval every year, but, um, you also, um, received a, a little handout, um, that Ms. Rankin gave you guys, just to highlight some things, some great things that we're doing in CTE right now. Um, we had an increase of 64 students this past year, um, in our CTE classes. Our technical attainment is also over the state average at 85.2%, and the state average is 81%. Our students earn, um, 2,537 credentials in 20 different areas, and if you look at the list, we're ranked in the top 10. We are 10, however, um, if you look, um, we're very close to Johnston County. We're, we're only 400 students of, credentials away from Charlotte Met, and I, I think that's pretty impressive, and it was so impressive that I said, um, can we get percentage of our students versus just a number? You know, because when we're compared to Charlotte Met and Wake, you know, we have this many students credentially, and I think that's, you know, it deserves kind of a, a percentage, um, ranking versus just a number ranking, because we're never gonna have 7,000, um, credentials and, and compete with, um, Wake County, but I think that our teachers and our students did a fabulous job, um, earning those credentials. I'm happy to say that we're offering some new courses this coming school year, Public Safety, Firefighter Technology 2, Firefighter Technology 3, Agriculture Mechanics, and Animal Science. Our CTSOs were very busy. Um, we have a lot of first-place winners. We had one first-place winner in Decca, 12 in FBLA, and four in HOSA. We also have three state officers this year, one in Decca, one in FBLA, um, oh, I did leave one out, we have four, I'm sorry, and one in, one HOSA, and one Skills USA, and they're all attending our national, um, conference. Um, in September, we're gonna host Construction Career Day with, um, North Carolina Department Transportation. At the fairgrounds, that date has not been set, because we had tentatively, tentatively set a date, and it's during the fair, so we're gonna have to kind of change that. We can't have it at the same time. Um, as you heard, we partner with PCC in a lot of ways, other than visions and, um, the electrical trades in welding. Um, we also have Work Keys. Um, PCC and United Way fund all of our seniors, okay, not just, um, the ones who are concentrators. They help, we write a grant, and we fund all of our seniors to take the Work Keys, which is, which is really good, and they also give us the ability to, um, have some sample questions through PCC. Our planned expenditures this year are to build teacher capacity and update, um, our curriculum. We're building our strong partnerships, and one major way that we're building it is through our STEM labs, um, that we're putting in, um, three of our middle schools this year. Um, this coming year, we are seeking industry input for the modules that we're listing, um, that we're gonna have, and if you look here, we have, um, some listed here, which are our top choices at this point. This list is not final by any means, because we're still waiting on some key industry, um, and businesses to kind of decide which ones they'd like for us to offer, so...
It's exciting.
Yes, it's very exciting. Um, we're, we're excited. We've had several, um, meetings with our industry partners, and they're, they're really excited about, um, what this is gonna do in five to six years for their, for their industry, because these are workers.
Sounds good.
Great.
Does anybody have any questions?
Jill.
Any motion to approve the...
Yeah.
I have, I just a comment, Mr. Chair. Um, Beth Ann, I was very glad to see on this overall narrative under Part II Performance Indicator, Technical Skill Attainment, that you did single out participation fund summer conference for all the teachers.
Absolutely.
That's very important and, um, vital. I know in the past, I, I hear some teachers maybe say that some, some don't feel like they have been encouraged to go, and that's important for them to, to obtain those, those skill areas that they can pass on to their students. And then the other thing is allocating funds to support career technical student organizations, which is critical to, to provide those leadership skills, to make sure that our students are attaining everything they need to in order to become very, very productive citizens in the workforce. So, I was glad to see that put in there.
Thank you.
Jill.
I move that we approve the application for career and technical education, state and federal funding, 2014.
Second. Jill made the motion, and Mary Williams seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passed. Great.
Thank you so much.
Finance Committee, update. Benji.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, we had a, uh, combined meeting with Operations, as you know, on, uh, May the 29th, that PAC told us, and at this time, I'm gonna turn that meeting over. I, I chaired part of the meeting, and then I had to leave early, and then, uh, Mary assumed the duties of the chair, so Mary, uh, between the two of us, if you want to, we'll turn it over to Michael to sort of lead the discussion.
We will do.
Okay.
Good evening. The, uh, Finance Committee and Joint, uh, Operations Committee met to discuss two, uh, two items on agenda for finance-related. One was the Budget Amendment, and then a review of the, of the state budget proposals. You've gotta hand that out at your seat. That kind of summarizes both budget, uh, items, both agenda items for, uh, concerns to the finance. I'll just spend a couple of minutes. First, I'll review on Budget Amendment Number Two, and then touch on the, on the proposed state budgets. Per Budget Amendment Number Two, the, the budget for Pitt County Schools stands at approximately $225.8 million, which is an increase of approximately $1,267,000 from Budget Amendment Number One. It's about a half percent increase from Budget Amendment Number One. When you look at $225.7 million, operating funds comprise the largest component of that, about $204 million, that's 90% of the total, with capital outlay coming in at $8 million, as well as child attrition at approximately $13.7 million, with the operating budget, 80%, 80 out of every $100 dedicated and going directly into the classroom, at approximately $163.7 million, with supporting services for the instructional function coming in approximately 17 and a half percent. If you look at the major items of increase per Budget Amendment Number Two, you have the Read to Achieve Program, summer allocation of approximately $348,000, you have digital learning grants, various adjustments to state allotments based off of ADM. We have, uh, Students with Disability Federal Funding of approximately $432,000. Rescued Top Incentive Bonus is approved by the State Board of Education of $339,000, and then various, various, um, special revenue grants that come through the local operations, totaling $29,000, for a total of $1.26 million per Budget Amendment Number Two. After reviewing the Budget Amendment, the, um, Joint Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval to the full board.
Your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve Budget Amendment Number Two.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mark made a motion, and, uh, Benji seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass.
Now, after discussing Budget Amendment Number Two, we moved on to a discussion of concerns to the state budget process. Basically, there's been two versions of next year's budget released, the Governor's Budget version and the Senate version of the budget. It has just been released about one day prior to our meeting, and a summary of those two budgets as concerned to the impact on our operations can be found starting on page two of that handout. I'd like to say, first of all, that both versions of the budget, the Governor and the Senate provides projected salary increases for teachers, which are well overdue and well earned, with concerns to, uh, our teachers here in the state of North Carolina, but both of them have very interesting ways they go about funding that increase. With concerns to the Governor's Budget, uh, the Governor's Budget has the 7% increase, uh, year one for beginning teachers, and another 7% year two, and about a thousand-dollar increase for all other state employees, 2% increase for all the teachers. Hidden within that budget, though, is basically a shift of about $70 million worth of state responsibility from the state level down to the local level, allowing the state to wash its hands of those responsibilities, with concerns to workers' comp and tort claims. This would create about a $1.7 million unfunded liability for Pitt County Schools' local operations, beginning with next fiscal year's operations. Not only would this create a significant budget shortfall, but basically, I believe, it, it kind of changes the, uh, the rules to the game, with concerns to the expectation of funding instruction within the state of North Carolina, and pushing certain responsibilities down to the local level, leaves the one questioning what it would be next if this were to occur. So, there's basically two, uh, impacts, including in that one line item that we have to keep our eyes on. And then, second, the Senate's version of the budget. Again, that had been released about a day prior, uh, to us meeting. Now, the Senate's version of the budget, uh, provides a significant increase in teacher salaries for those that elect to forego tenure, anywhere between 7 and 20% increase. However, but it appears that the, uh, the Senate's version of the budget proposes salary increases, increases for teachers as a pawn in a political game that allows, um, certain areas of public education to be put on the, on the chopping block, and those areas include funding for teacher assistants, which is basically, uh, cut in half per this budget proposal, which would be a reduction of approximately 117 positions for Pitt County Schools. It also changes the, um, the funding formula for a kin, for a second and third grade teacher to one, uh, one to 18, which basically would reduce about 12, uh, teaching positions allotted within Pitt County Schools. There's a situation, which reduction to, um, to transportation funding, about 6%, which would be over a $300,000 reduction. School nurses are, uh, are reduced with, uh, within this, uh, within this budget, about five, uh, nursing positions would be reduced within our classroom. Overall, a reduction of over $5 million in funding, and so that, these areas are cutting, um, the budget and basically, you know, saying that these areas aren't needed, so to speak, and, uh, we need to make sure that we promote to our legislative group the, the importance of teacher assistants in all areas, and not to be using such areas as leverage in a political game moving forward. We met with, uh, Brian Brown this past week, Dr. Linker and myself, and communicated on these concerns, and, uh, basically received a response that the, the House version of the budget would be looking very different from that of the Senate. We will be awaiting anxiously to determine whether that holds out to be true, and we're hoping that that, uh, version of the budget will be released sometime in the next week or so, so...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I might make a comment or two. Uh, first of all, Michael, a tremendous job, again, of all your hard work, dedication, and helping to put this together. Um, there's no, at, just, I, I need to answer to the question, but I just, we need it, we need to have it out in the public. There's no way through a Senate budget that we can, through attrition in retirements and resignations, handle all of those cuts that they're talking about.
Absolutely not.
That needs to be said publicly, and, um, then, um, secondly, um, when it is time for the General Assembly to go into conferee to hash out a budget that the state is gonna have to live with, it is very important that our citizenry understand that and know that, and, and keep a finger on the pulse, and make sure that they contact their legislators as such, because, uh, the House in its generation of a budget, which is coming up next, can write some eels that the Senate budget has proposed, but at the same time, they're gonna have to come to a conference to, uh, come out with that final budget, so, so that citizenry, our, our constituents, our citizens, our parents, and, and people in the county are gonna need to stay in close contact with our legislators on that, particularly their House members.
What's most concerning, um, to me, and I know I'm kind of biased in this process, but basically, it's a, it speaks to the value that certain positions within our, our, our school system bring back to a classroom, and, um, basically, the lack of respect of that value.
Yep.
For example, you, uh, the, the state version of the budget, uh, basically says that, uh, second and third grade teacher assistants are cut in half, and the teacher allotment formula is cut in half, at the same time that we are appropriating $350,000 in state funding this summer to provide a Read to Atree Summer Program for, uh, to make sure our students are reading on grade level, and at the same time that teacher assistants are expected to be those ones administering the, the Read 3D assessments, so that teachers can better individualize instruction. It sends a mixed and yet very dangerous message to, uh, what the true intentions of a budget proposal as such would be to public education in state of North Carolina.
Sean, you had your hand up.
I, I would reiterate one thing Mr. Forbes said, Michael, outstanding job, as always. I also appreciate that you have the courage to stand at that microphone and use the term pawns in a game, and I can't stress that enough, and that is unfair to the people in the, in the education field, to our students, to their, to their families. I would also like to be clear and say publicly, in, in a, in a county government, a lot of times, we look to our county commissioners, and I'm correct, this is out of their hands. And I'm correct, this is out of their hands, correct? And I think that's important for the public to know. And Jane, you have a colored copy of this? Do you see the words written in red here? I just want to make sure of that. You've got it? Okay. We have a lack of respect for teacher assistants. And I sat in a meeting at South Greenville Elementary just a couple of weeks ago and several of those teachers and the principals said, "We need more teacher assistants right here at South Greenville Elementary," which we've all talked about, is a wonderful school. And here, this would say, we have to tell 117 of you that you are now unemployed. That's unacceptable. We have an asthma clinic in this community, a heart center, a dental school. And we're looking at potentially having to wipe out five nurses in our schools when we don't even have one nurse per school. But I can tell you how many prescriptions of Q var are out there, a whole lot. And that needs to be monitored in our educational setting very much. And the transportation allotments, the lack of accountability in this kind of budget, the lack of taking responsibility is inexcusable and outright shameful. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just, again, I could use cliches all day long, but I think that our teachers need to understand that, yes, everyone supports increases in salary. It's well overdue, well deserved.
Absolutely.
But it cannot be used in order to win political favor and in the process, basically dismantle various parts of public education that are providing a direct impact back to classrooms in certain areas that the state has earmarked as top priorities.
That's right. You're right.
Absolutely.
Ms. Counsel.
I just wanted to ditto what my two colleagues have just said, that, and it's all true, but the additional piece of it, as I said at that committee meeting on last Thursday, that it behooves us as Board of Education members, and I think it was brought up to get parents involved. You know, everybody is at stake and teachers as well because Texas has been in the state. And I went online and they have a site on their website for North Carolina teachers, so, and some are leaving. But in addition to that, we need to speak out more. You know, we said at this board meeting, but we're not saying it in Raleigh. As a board, as a complete board, we need to be together. We need to partner with our county commissioners. We all need to go together and tell Raleigh that they are, you know, are not doing the right thing for education in our state, period, and Pitt County is going to suffer. We all are going to suffer. So I don't understand why it's so difficult for us not to come together to do that. And I have served my community for 22 years on the city side. And when we got ready to fight for something, we not only fought for the city of Greenville, we fought with the state of North Carolina and the National League of Cities. We went to, not only as an individual group, we went as a whole nation to Congress and we went to our individual states, and we got things done. And the other piece is, you know, you've got a right to vote, too. You can vote some of these jokers out that don't mean us no good and don't mean anything for our communities and our families. And we have got to be real about this thing. To me, we sound very hypocritical as a Board of Education. You know, we were talking this, but then we need to go together as a group. Numbers do matter. You may not be able to get everything passed, but if you show up, some things will happen eventually. Maybe not all things, but we've got to do something other than just talk. I'm sick of hypocritis, I can't even say it right, but being hypocritical, we got to go together. Mr. Board Chair, I'd like to recommend tonight that you, as our Board Chair, recommend to us that we need to get out of Greenville, go to Raleigh, and campaign these legislators. This is our county. We are representing our people, you know, so we need to do something together. At least write a letter together and campaign against this nonsense, you know. And for those of us on the board that's straddling the fences, then, you know, if you don't go, then that's okay. But at least we need to come together as a body of Board of Education members, get our teachers and all others that support education, that say they support it, to do something about it. Because as long as if you ask not, you get not. So this is what I've said in the committee meetings over and over, and I've been to Raleigh. Some of us have been, but just one or two of us can't make an impact by ourselves. But every Board of Education in the state need to be there. All the teachers need to be there, the principals, the children, everybody need to show up. Because as long as we sit back, they're going to take us back, as I've said before, before 1619, before America was started, this is what this is about, y'all. This is serious business. And we need to stop talking and put some things into action. And so I'd like to recommend tonight that we do something as a Board of Education. I'd like to move that.
All right, Ms. Counsel, what I would say is that I would like for you to organize it.
I'm ready.
Organize it and get it, get a date down where a letter that the board members who choose to sign can choose to sign it and those who would like to deliver it to the legislature can go on a specific date. And that would be the action.
Yeah, we need some action because I'm sick of talking. It's not getting us anywhere.
Mr. Rob.
I just want to say to Michael, I appreciate your forwardness and your tactfulness because if there's anybody that we need in your spot to try to get money, you're the man. And I've seen you at level number nine.
That's why those Texas plates will be $10 plate.
Oh, okay.
I got the receipt book ready.
I'm sure you have.
But let me say, I appreciate that and I thank you and I think all of Pitt County will appreciate that. But when I see $70 million, all of a sudden, what we were expecting not there. And then I see Pitt County as a growing county and the expectation is all the industries, divident, the DSM, all of those. Their expectation is when they come here to do jobs or whatever, they're going to expect a high-level school system. And this doesn't prepare us not to go there because we need dollars to do some of the things that we need to do. The other item is, and I like to say, and I want to jump on the boat with what was just been said, but it really is a North Carolina problem, not necessarily a Pitt County thing, but it is Pitt County.
That is.
I think basically what we need to do is we could get that state board, that State Board of Education, and somehow get them to realize, and they may be, that they may just need to be touched a little bit to get things going. But when you go inside those buildings there with a state kind of representation versus just Pitt County, and that's going to be part of what she can do.
Well, and the thing, one important thing that we have to always remember, we can talk all day long. We can go up there all day long, but people, when they vote, there's only 10% or 12% that are getting out and voting. People have got to get out of their houses, they've got to show up at the voting booth, and they got to vote. I mean, talk will get you nowhere.
Thank you.
You've got to have some action behind it.
That's right.
Mark, and then we'll move on, and Mary.
Well, I just want to say a couple of points. I agree with what Ms. Counsel is saying. I think we've got, there is a problem in North Carolina right now with education. These wild swings in curriculum, now we're talking about going away from common core. Teachers don't have stability in the classrooms in terms of worrying about what's going to be taught this year versus next year. Teachers are worried about salaries. What the legislator and legislature and the governor's problem is, is that they have a major PR issue in the selection time. And I think they recognize that they're going to have to do something at least to quieten things down in terms of salaries in this state right now. So I think that's why you see these massively wild issues in terms of what they're looking at in terms of pay. When you mentioned the state board, remember, the State Board of Education is appointed by the governor. The only group that's going to have any type of change in this state is going to be the legislature. And that's where we need to start in terms of those types of issues. Now, I'll be the first one to say, as a registered Republican, I won't make the same mistakes I've made in terms of voting for those groups. But it's a major, major problem, and I know a lot of other like-minded people that have said the same thing. Bait and switch. And I think McCrory is beginning to read the political writing on the wall in terms of, whoa, we've done too much. But the issue will be, when it comes time for the budget to be put out, will he have the intestinal fortitude to vote veto what those houses are doing? And that's the question of the day.
Mary.
Yes. It's me, you taking a deep breath?
Well, I'm just disturbed. I'm serious.
But it's all good, though, because, Michael, you're doing an excellent job. You put it out here for us and it's easy to read. When we were in the meeting Thursday, it was easy to read then and it's easy to read now. The numbers don't lie. I'm a diehard basketball fan. And when they make a bad call, then they go to the free throw line, the first thing out of my mouth when they miss, ball don't lie. Same thing, the numbers don't lie. And it is what it is. And the numbers are what they are. But we have to all remember, we got into this school board through volunteerism. We got into it for a reason, for the children, for our community, and to support the voice of the parents. And that's what it's all about. And if we do not be careful and do not contact our legislators and if we do not contact the money that supported the ones that put them in office, we've got to call those people. That's very important. When you know the ones who put the money behind the ones that put them in office, that matters. To write them letters and let them know how difficult it is on our kids. Even if it does not work, it's still important to write them a letter, email them, call them, and let them know that our kids in our county are suffering, that our teachers are suffering. You cannot keep working every day and putting the burden and expectations on a whim, on a thought of what they might do, what the legislators might do. Now, yes, we go, but we have people that are part of an education cabinet that is appointed by the governor. And that's for real, for real. And these people come down here and they say one thing, and we know they do. And they get to Raleigh and do another. So it affects all of us, but mainly it affects our kids. And it affects how the people in front of our children feed their families, how they pay their bills to. And that's what bothers me because that affects our kids. And we all, and our kids deserve a good public education. They deserve that from us. And they shouldn't be used as political pawns at the right season. They deserve a good, a good, sound public education. And we need to contact the ones that have given them money, that have put them in office, and make sure that they're doing the right thing, bottom line. And if we as 12, or we as nine, or we as six, or we as four, or we as two or one, either way, we need to be on board, whether we go to Raleigh as a group, we go to Raleigh as one, or we call them down here. They answer to us, they can come down here. They come down here when they want to talk to us on their agenda, call them down here. They're here. They're our board, PCC, they're our board, they're here. So they can come down here to us.
I agree.
And they're going to address our concerns. So, you know, we need to think about things like that. If we don't want to go, or you don't want to call, let them come down here and hold a phone with us. Let them speak to some of the teachers. Let them show, let them see what our kids are doing in spite of. Let them show them what they winning in spite of. Let them show them our numbers in spite of. It makes a difference. And that's it. That's what I got to say.
To you.
I would just say that I would like, I think that it's important that we speak out about what this budget is going to mean for our folks in Pitt County Schools. But I also would like to urge people in Pitt County who care about the public school system in this county and the future of this county to do the same thing. I can't, it's insulting to the intelligence of the voters in Pitt County that the General Assembly would think that they could be, that somehow other people are going to think, well, if you just raise teacher salaries, that's going to make a difference.
Yeah.
And they can do it by themselves.
Yeah.
They can't.
Yeah.
Appropriately paid teachers are just a piece of what makes a sound educational system. And that's what we need in Pitt County. And as far as I'm concerned, the state is failing in its constitutional responsibility here. And people should be outraged about that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Operations Committee, Matt.
Good evening. How's it going? Well, after all that, we'll talk about synergistics a little bit. Talk a little bit of money savings, is what we're hoping to do. I did ask Dr. Larry Price to give us a brief, brief summary, brief, on this program, what it can bring to Pitt County Schools, brief. Basically, most everybody was there on Thursday night, but just let Larry kind of give a brief overview of what we can do and then we can kind of go from there. Got any questions for him or anything else?
Cliff notes.
Mr. Forrest, I was thinking about these ladies, and you remember in the FFA, we had a separaneous public speaking contest?
Exactly. These three folks did a great job of giving a speech right off the top of their head, so, and from their heart. So that's a good thing. I'm Larry Price, I'm with Synergistic. Three years ago, I retired as superintendent of Wilson County Schools, where I was superintendent over there for a long time. And I've been working with Synergistic now for a while. And I'm excited about the possibilities of working with Pitt County Schools. I enjoyed the committee meeting that we had the other day. Basically, Synergistic is a company that changes behaviors around the way energy is used in school districts, community colleges, healthcare organizations, medical, healthcare organizations, and universities. We help organizations save about 26% on their energy bills. We try to do that mostly in the unoccupied periods of the day when school is out or portions of buildings are not being used. We have been doing this for 28 years. We were formerly called Energy Education. To make the presentation short, you have some cliff notes sort of in front of you. It says what we do. We have a number of specialists that come to our school districts and work with the folks there to help not only change the behaviors, but to optimize the existing infrastructure that you have. You don't have to buy any new equipment to work with us. We don't expect that, we don't require that. We work with what you have. We do a really deep dive in terms of evaluating how your school district is using energy. If you notice here, it says that we analyze over 1,200 different areas of energy use. We're looking for lots of things. And we turn over every rock to see where there's opportunities, where energy's being used, where it doesn't have to be being used. We don't suggest that you have to cut the lights off, run the heat real low, run the air conditioner real high. We don't suggest those kind of things. We look for where we can save energy where it doesn't have to be being used. We help develop a culture of folks paying attention to how energy's being used in the district. I was telling someone down in Dorchester, South Carolina earlier today that before I started working with this company about a year and a half ago, when I brushed my teeth, I wet my toothbrush and the water just kept running. Now, I wet my toothbrush and I turn it off. And when I leave a room, I turn the lights off. And there's a number of things about my own lifestyle that have changed because I've become more energy-conscious. And that's what we help your folks do. We put the resources that you are now spending for energy into a better purpose. And as Michael just listed, you've got a lot of opportunities that you can use, the money that we can save. We're looking at about $180,000 in the quick start period, which is the first six months, when we get the program up and running and you don't pay any fees during that first six months. So we would look that, the end of December, we would have saved you around $180,000. In the first performance year, which would be January through December of 2015, we would look to save you a net of about $350,000. That net continues to grow over the five-year period that you're paying fees to where that's about $500,000. And then you stop paying us. We still support the program, we still are partners forever. Loudoun County, Virginia's been a partner for 20 years. Loudoun County, Virginia's been a partner for 22 years. So we keep supporting our clients even after the fee-paying period is over. When we do that, then your savings are going to be most of all of that gross, which is going to get you up to $1 million roughly per year of savings. So to me, it's a sound investment, and it makes a lot of sense. And I'm doing this because I sat where Dr. Linker is at least sitting for many years, and I saw the budgets go down, and I saw them ultimately come back when things got better, but not this time. And this time, we've got to find some other ways of being resourceful. And so instead of cutting, you know, $350,000 will pay for a few people, it'll pay for something, that you can divert some of those resources that you're now spending for energy to a better purpose. And that literally is my mission as I work with this company. And this company does what it says it's, it's going to do, and we look forward to the opportunity of working with you here in Pitt County.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the board, I know many of us were there the other night to hear Dr. Price's presentation. Dr. Price, I appreciate your time. I was very impressed with this, and I'm just glad to hear this would be a no-risk venture to the school system, which many of us are always in favor of. And I just look forward to hopefully engaging Synergistic in a long, fruitful relationship. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
I've got a motion to make and then a comment, if that's gonna be okay. I move that we contract with Synergistic Energy Conservation Company.
Benji made a motion, and Mary seconded. And in any discussion, I would say that we do not have a specific contract to put forward, but I talked with Dr. Linker, and I said, we, the board would entrust then him, his staff, and the company to come up with that contract and move forward.
Bring it back.
It's the wishes of the board, we, I said move forward with it. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. Any other discussion?
My comment, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I might, if the decision is to approve the relationship when there's no actual contract that the board has reviewed, that it be, the motion be contingent on having a contract reviewed by counsel, the superintendent, and give that authority, because really, we can't approve a contract if it doesn't have something in it.
My motion was, I move that we contract, not approval, that we contract.
So that we contemplate the contract, final contract, coming back to the board for approval?
Right. Is that what?
Do you want to do that?
But, but, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I, I think my motion would be germane, because I'm not moving that we.
Approve.
Prove a contract, I'm moving that we contract. Therefore, I would argue that my motion would be germane.
What he's saying is that you are approving the contract, or you're saying that you're giving the, the.
Contract to them.
The, move forward to obtain.
Obtain a contract one, yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
That's right.
And then with that contract, what, what are your wishes?
Contingent that we agree on.
Yes, contingent that the board approves it.
So you're saying it comes back to the board, full board.
Making sure.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll, I acknowledge all of that to be true.
Man, I sexy it.
So we're looking at.
Yes. The other thing we could do, and is what, what she was saying, just kind of like what we did with the cell tower, you can approve myself, the superintendent, and our in-house counsel to make the contract ratified and bring it back to you. That's another option that you have there, entrust us to, to get the contract prepared and bring it to you to ratify.
That's what I was trying to get.
Okay.
Benji.
Okay.
Amend your motion?
Do I?
Can you amend your motion?
He's saying you don't need to.
Clarify.
What we need is it restated.
Whatever Carol writes down, that's what it's going to be.
What Matt said.
Carol, you better, you better say something.
I'd like to hear it restated.
Yeah.
Benji.
Well, my motion.
Listen to Matt.
Huh?
Listen to Matt again.
Deborah.
We, listen, yeah, to myself, we'd like for the board to approve the authority to Dr. Linker and in-house counsel to get this contract prepared and bring it to the, the board chair to ratify. Is that correct?
I move what he just said.
And I said, we got a question for our attorney.
The motion on the floor.
Deborah.
I think that there are two options.
Well, they're saying that my motion's not germane, so the motion would be withdrawn.
Yeah, but let's.
Number one would be, would be, the motion that is on the floor is perfectly legitimate, and then that would require coming back to the board for approval of the contract, once it is negotiated. The second option is that the board would authorize or sort of delegate authority to the superintendent to enter into the final terms of the contract. But from what I understand, it's not what your motion was. Your motion was to enter into a contract to bring back to the board for approval. And that is, that is certainly, so the board can go either way, it really is the option of the board, to approve the final contract or delegate authority.
You can delegate authority to the superintendent where he signs on.
Or bring it back to the board.
Please delegate.
I, okay, we'll delegate it to superintendent.
He's gone along with it, Nate.
I just wanted to get this thing done.
Is that legal?
The, um, yes, the, the board can approve contracting with the company, delegating the final contract language to be determined by the superintendent.
And that's what we want.
And then bring it back.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Appreciate that, Matt. And Benji.
Thank you.
All that hard work.
Yeah, I tell you, that was, that was tough. I earned my pay. Mr. Chairman, I make my comment, because I said I had a comment.
Yes.
And I want to use this analogy, I, I was wondering when we would get to it. I want to thank Dr. Linker for linking us with this company.
That sounds perfect.
Absolutely. Don't you like that?
Linker for linking.
Matt.
Okay, the next item I have for you, we need to get back into the modular classroom realm again.
Lake Forest.
We have Lake Forest and DH Conley. Currently, Lake Forest is 50-plus students over capacity. The projection is over 100 capacity at Lake Forest. DH Conley currently is 150 over capacity. Projected for next year, 170 over capacity. That's not the only schools in the district that are at or above capacity, but these are the schools that are in the most need right now of us to come up with a way to get them classrooms. What's the total population at Conley right now? ADM is 1599, but they're, they're right there on 1,600, depending on what date.
Any other questions for Matt? Mr. Robert.
What, what is the, I don't know what word to say, longevity of a mobile?
They can, they can last 20 years, they can last 40 years, it depends. We have some actually on our schools right now, they're from 1962.
You. Okay.
I, I'm not clear yet on exactly what Matt is proposing. I mean.
I hadn't got that far.
Okay. So I, I would like to hear exactly what he's proposing we buy.
Yes.
Okay. So, mobile units, we have done lots of extensive research. We have got several quotes on mobile units. A six-classroom mobile unit with bathrooms, brand new, is approximately $360,000, with approximately $60,000 in setup fees. That gets it delivered, that gets it set up, that gets it plumb, that gets it hooked up. Okay? We are needing at least a six-pack classrooms at Conley and a six-pack classrooms at Lake Forest. Okay? We have found, however, in Wake County, two units, two eight-pack, one eight-pack and one six-pack classroom coming off of lease that are coming up for sale this summer. Those range from $170,000 to $200,000, depending on which one you go to look at. So one of the goals for us is to go look at those this weekend and see if a used unit is even an option for us. As you start looking at these, leasing these units costs you between $3,000 and $5,000 a month. So if you look at lease compared to buy within six years, if you bought a new, you'd, or you'd have it paid for. If you leased a, leased one, you'd have it paid for within six years. If you go for a used, within four years, you'd have it paid for. We do have money set aside from the county right now. It was actually from the construction of Lake Forest, as well as the construction of new building and renovations at DH Conley. So there are funds available for us to go leverage from the county right now without any further action on the county's part to be able to go get the funding to go do this. What we need to do is make the decision that we're going to go this route to, to support having these classrooms for the kids, or figure out a different way. Myself, Dr. Linker, and I think the senior staff, it is supportive of actually going to get these units. It does give us a, right now, means to, to fix these overpopulation problems. It gives us a little bit more longevity to figure out what we do years down the road as we get these in place. What we, what we need from the board tonight is to give us the authority to actually go out, find, purchase, and get these units here, so when we got, for next school year, we will have classrooms at these two locations.
You.
So, um, I am so disturbed with this, because we spent years fighting to get rid of mobile units in this county. And I don't see that this as a fix, I see it as a thumb in the dyke, because these schools are not going to quit growing. And so what are you going to do the next year when there's another 100 students coming into Lake Forest? You're going to buy more trailers? And there has got to be a better plan than this. I mean, if, if, if somebody can assure me that this is a short-term, one-year plan, and we're going to figure something else out to do to relieve the overcrowding at these two schools, I'm happy to listen to that, but I don't, I think we, it's a trap if you keep on buying mobile units year after year, because schools are growing.
Mr. Rob.
When, when do you want these operational? When would, do you?
Like to have them opened up for start of school.
Start of school.
That's when they need it.
What's the total cost here you're talking about? Give me a total.
If, if we go new, we're looking at $850,000.
But we can buy, you go and look at used when over the weekend.
I want to go Thursday to look at used units for under 200.
Under 200,000.
A piece, and there's still a 60, approximately $60,000 delivery setup hookup fee per.
Mark.
I think, you know, I'm terribly disturbed we're getting back into the mobile housing business again in this county. And I still am greatly disturbed that we've got mobile units still sitting on the front lawn of DH Conley. That, that to me is just, just the worst of worst scenarios. But the problem is, and I think the public needs to understand this, you know, some people say, well, there's, what's the difference between teaching in a mobile unit and teaching in a classroom? And as a school principal, I can tell you, the problem that you have with mobile units is that you can add all the mobile units you want to a school building. You still have the finite resources of a cafeteria, of a gymnasium, and of other finite areas that buildings are locked into. And this to me, and, and I, and I know Mr. Johnson, I appreciate him being here, and I appreciate what all our county commissioners do for us, we have a wonderful relationship, and I want that to be out there first and foremost. But as somebody else said tonight, in terms of a county with the type of resources that we have, and I could go on and list them all, in terms of being the economic engine east of I-95, Pitt County is it, until you get to Wilmington. We can't do better in our county than what we're doing in terms of our county budget and what we're getting for our schools. I'm appreciative of every penny and every dime that we get, but we need to do more for our schools. Wake County today just approved an additional teacher supplement, that they're now proud to say that they're going to be the highest. They've got this little thing with Chapel Hill, Carver City, and now they've beaten them out. And that's a wonderful thing to have that kind of competition. But our economy is just on par in terms of economic growth lately with what we've got going on there. We need to do more in terms of what we're doing for teacher supplements in this county. If we don't, other smaller counties are eating our lunch with less, plenty less, in terms of what we're doing. And I really, really worry that getting back into the mobile home business is going to be a problem for our schools that is just going to continue to grow and grow and grow again. We've got a positive thing, that Pitt County's growing. That's wonderful. Lots of rural counties in this state are shrinking and losing population big time. We're growing. We also need to let our schools grow in terms of the amount of funding that we're giving them, and that's something that we've got to look at. That's just my piece on that.
And.
The problem is, we only have a couple of months here.
Yeah.
So we need to direct Matt in some way to make it.
And I'm, and I'm in favor of doing what we can do.
Fix this overnight.
We gotta have a long-term plan.
Right. I agree.
The point of this conversation is where he needs to go with this next.
Basically, we need to stick with the modular units. Do we want them to go forward as the staff has recommended to us? That's the question on the table.
The question on the table, I move that we go forward with what the staff has recommended to us.
Regarding?
The mobile units.
Second.
Benji's made a motion, Robert seconded. Any more discussion?
This is probably going to make Mr. Synergistic a little bit more difficult to say.
Yeah. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
No.
Nay.
One, two, three. That's Ms. Owens, Ms. Counsel, and Ms. Cabinet, and Ms. Williams.
You might want to, you might want to call a vote again.
Let's call a vote again. All those in favor, reach your right hand.
And only because of the emergent need that we have.
Yeah. Well, you got, we made our.
I just feel like we can't hamstring.
We made our comments. All right, those against?
I don't agree with it, I just got to do something.
You've got those, Carol? All right, it did carry.
No, we have more.
Okay. Comments by, wait a minute.
I would like to make a motion that we just continue with comments by board members, and we have no precedent needed, Superintendent, and that we continue with the agony part of this meeting, as we've had the ecstasy, now we have the agony, so.[1686.25]